Okay, Gary, when you're ready. The regular meeting, I'm sorry, the special meeting in Bussaras City Council for July the 3rd, 2018 is called to order. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The reason this is a special meeting is because we are an hour early this evening so that everybody can get out here, out of here and enjoy the fireworks this evening. So, roll call please.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Trucca.
Here.
Sack.
Here.
Before you, you have the minutes from the June 19th, 2018 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Trucca to accept the minutes from the June 19th, 2018 regular meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak. Don Sheer from the Veterans Hall of Fame is here to talk to us this evening. If you would step up to the podium, please, and we need your name and your address, please.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Don Sheer, 1390 Rosedale Avenue here in Bussaras. And I'm secretary treasurer of Crawford County Veterans Hall of Fame, and I'm also adjutant treasurer for the DAB Chapter 100 here. Can't kill two birds with one stone. We're going to be doing Forgiving Odds at Walmart from 10:00 to noon and 6:00 to 8:00 on Friday the 13th, Saturday the 14th, and Sunday the 15th this month. And then we will be downtown August 27th and 28th, Friday and Saturday. And so far, we've got Carver, the Post Office, and Ace Hardware. We've had a couple places back out that they don't want anybody to do anything there anymore. I place cans like this all along from old McDonald's and Kentucky Fried Chicken all the way out to the new place on the north end of town where the old Michael Barnes used to be. So find some, we service them every week, we'd appreciate the help. We also have the mobile service van coming here to Bussaras at the Amplex Number 27 on August 9th. Now, we, the National, we send stuff out to veterans, but if you have a veteran that just moved into the area and needs help with paperwork or anything, it's all free. And if you want a second person to look at it, you've had trouble with people here in town, step up and see us, we'd be glad to help you. I'm also here for Crawford County Veterans Hall of Fame. We built the monument on the east side of the courthouse where the fountain used to be. Well, really, it was still there, we found that out, and then we had to dig it up on top of everything else. But we got that part of it up, we got about $140,000 into it. And I pass out to the ladies and gentlemen here picture of what we hope to put in between the courthouse and the side, new sidewalk that we built. And this is to honor all the people that died while they were in the service for Crawford County. And we're asking Crawford County residents if they had somebody from the, especially from Civil War, Spanish-American War, giving back that far as heart to really find good information. Send it to us at, you just put veterans post office, Box Street 24, and it'll get to us, and we'll check it out. But we need names, we have 450, we've got to win for 600. If anybody knows the name of the enlisted men that died in the combat effort and are buried here in Crawford County, I'd love to know their names. I know names of the officers, but not the enlisted men. And we would like to honor them too. Some of them are built or buried out by Uber Hill and near Leesville, and just a way of honoring them as our first heroes. This new addition, what we're talking about is 24,900. We've already got $140,000 vested up at the courthouse. So this is just a little bit, and we got some money already, but any businesses that would like to help us out, we'd be more than happy to let you know where to send the money. And that does it for this part of it. May I say something? Okay. Today I received a phone call, one of many, Bussaras City Schools. Picked it up. We have your back brace. And I've been getting calls, and I've been receiving calls, so they must be using my name too. People sent, "I'm returning your phone call," and I have no idea who they are. And it's the monitor that you press to get help for back braces for pain, and it's just constant, and they don't use their own name. They use Bussaras people's names.
Yes, we'll have law director, if you'd like to comment on that.
I, I don't really matter.
You don't?
No.
Oh, we all get those. You don't get them?
No.
Well, I do.
I do.
Yeah, they look like they, they, what they do is they pick a phone number from here in Bussaras that looks like it's a local number.
Yes.
So that you'll pick up the phone.
It's spooky.
I have Bussaras Community Hospital, Mansfield Towing.
I have the city of Bussaras.
Yeah. Oh, so just a Tom Parker, just a, yeah, that's a, that's a common problem.
Most of them are on my landline.
It doesn't matter landline or cell phone, they'll, whatever number is available, they'll dial it.
Okay, but you know, it's just something that people have complained about, and, and it's not like they're stealing our identity or anything when they're doing this.
Yes, they are. They are.
Okay, well, thank you guys, and I'll pick up those pictures when we're done.
Okay, Don, I'll pass them around to you here. Thank you very much for coming this, this evening. Anyone else to address council this evening? We'll move on to communications and meetings.
Yes, we have three letters here. The first one is from the Crawford County Sheriff's, best 10, regarding dated June 15th, regarding a letter of retribution for Lieutenant Eric McNutt of the Bussaras City Fire Department. On June 14th, 2018, 8:30 a.m., the Crawford County Sheriff's Office received a 911 call in regards to a dump truck going off the roadway on US 30 in Liberty Township that ended up in the Sandusky River. Several deputies from the Sheriff's Office, Ohio State Highway Patrol, Bussaras City Fire Department, Liberty Township, Volunteer Fire Department, and Life Support all responded to the injury crash. Upon hearing the radio traffic, I responded to the scene as well. Upon arrival, I observed several first responders already down in the river giving the injured driver the medical assistance he needed. To complicate matters, the injured party had to be extracted from the river using special equipment from your, from your department. You were making decisions before many of us arrived on scene. You wore many hats during this incident, from incident commander, firefighter, EMT, and hazardous material control. Everyone was following your instructions at the scene, including me. Controlling a scene of this size brings many challenges, and you handled each one very well while executing, extracting the injured driver from a complicated scene so he could get the treatment he needed at a trauma center. Often, what we do in the profession of public service tends to go unnoticed or seen as part of the job. I just wanted to let you know that I did recognize what you did, and thank you personally for the professionalism and leadership you demonstrated on this day. Congratulations for a job well done. Respectfully, Scott and Kent Sheer. That should be accepted and filed.
Amazing. Lieutenant Eric McNutt. How long has he been, do we know how long he's been with the, with the department?
No, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, I need a motion to accept and file this letter. Mr. Myers, second.
Second.
Hi, Mr. McKeever, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed.
And we also have a communication from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Notice to the legislative authority, this is regarding a transfer of a liquor license from WRL Incorporated, doing business as Crazy Fox Saloon, first floor and basement and patio, 112 through 114 West Mansfield Street in Bussaras, to Rock of Bussaras LLC, doing business as Crazy Fox Saloon, first floor and basement and patio, 112 through 114 West Mansfield Street, Bussaras, and that has to be recorded and filed for safety.
Okay, I need a motion to refer this to Health and Safety.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed, it's in Health and Safety.
And we have a short note here addressed to the mayor from Crawford County Help Me Grow staff. Thank you for your recent donation of pool passes, our families appreciate them so much. Thank you for supporting our program sincerely, Crawford County Help Me Grow staff. And that is accepted and filed.
I need a motion to accept and file this.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shock, second by Mr. Wireball to accept the note from Crawford County Help Me Grow staff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. These are very much appreciated by them, I can give them to the families to go out and enjoy a day at Alamo Park, and I think, I think they took out 30 passes, it was something like that, so it was a very generous donation to them. Order, Mr. Foote, whose public plans and buildings, who is the chair?
The sheriff's.
Mr. Wireball, will you get started then, please?
I can do that. Bussaras City Council Joint Regular Committees, met Thursday, June 21st, 2018. Members present were Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Bruce Trucca, Maritza, 636, Doug Foote, and Andrew Shock. Okay, say that too? Oh, I thought it was me. Bussaras City, Joint Regular Committee meeting was called to order by Foote at 6:00 p.m. Public participation. Harry Spiegel, utility superintendent, introduced Ed Spriggs of Practical Inspections, Oak Harbor, who gave a presentation of the condition of the city's north and east water towers. The company expect, inspects water towers and handles some fabrication work, but doesn't do any actual painting of towers. Spriggs said the exterior coatings of the city towers are in good shape for their age. He contended that full-service tower maintenance contracts are considerably more expensive. He said action should be taken on the tower's paint coatings in three to five years. Number three, order of committee business, Public Lanes and Buildings Committee.
Okay, I see.
So, Public Lanes and Buildings Committee began at 6:30, 7:00 p.m. Members Bruce Trucca, Doug Foote, and Mark McKeever were present. Bruce was acting chair. Water towers maintenance councilperson Kevin Myers asked utility superintendent Harry Spiegel to put together a report comparing the presentations by two companies, Suez and Practical Inspections, on the condition and cost of maintaining the city's two water towers. Trucca recessed Public Lanes and Buildings Committee at 6:38 p.m.
Questions or comments regarding the meeting? Done. Okay, thank you, moving on, Health and Safety Committee, Mr. Myers.
Bussaras City Health and Safety met on Thursday, June 21st, 2018, 6:38 p.m. Members present, Mark McKeever, Bruce Trucca, Andrew Shock, and Kevin Myers Chair. Item one, traffic control map changes. The Traffic Commission has requested approval for the following amendments to the traffic control map. A, repeal a portion of ordinance number 19-2017, quote, a 35 mile an hour speed limit signed on North Sandusky Avenue from Irving Street to the North Corporation limit, quote. Item B, state route four, south from Beal Avenue to Mount Zion Road, to 45 miles per hour. C, state routes 19 and 100 from Sherwood Drive to Beal Avenue, to 45 miles an hour. D, state route 19 from Tiffin Street to state route four, to 55 miles an hour. E, state route 98 from Beal Avenue to Mount Zion Road, to 45 miles per hour. F, state route 98 from Irving Street to the west ramp of US 30, to 45 miles an hour. G, no parking on the west curb of Spring Street and West Mansfield Street, on the south side of West Mansfield Street, for 215 feet, and to add this to the existing traffic control map. Entry number 2778 dated June 17th, 1964. H, remove the right and left turn lanes on West Mansfield Street at Spring Street, ordinance number 45-2006, dated October 17th, 2006. I, remove the turn lane on West Mary Street at Apple Street, ordinance number 44-89, dated June 21st, 1989, and ordinance number 34-2004, dated August 24th, 2004. J, establish a 127-foot eastbound turn lane on West Mary Street and North Sandusky Avenue. Myers noted that items A through F are mandated by an ODOT traffic study. Items H and I are related to the installation of four-way stops at those intersections. Myers asked the administration to see what all the changes would look like as traffic control map entries, the matter was continued. Number two, ambulance service. Myers, who represents the city, on the central joint ambulance district, reported that the district has received two bids for ambulance service, $673,800 over three years from Portsmouth Ambulance Service, and $11,399,966 over three years for life support to current provider. Using the first bid as a guide, Myers calculated that the city's cost during the first year of the contract would be about $91,000, although he's waiting for numbers from the county auditor. The ambulance district will have a special meeting at 5:30 p.m. on July 2 at the County Sheriff's Office. Item three, rental properties. Law Director Rob Ratliff presented the draft ordinance on rental property registrations updated from a 2014 proposal. He was asked to provide the earlier proposal for comparison. Ratliff noted that with the safety of some rental properties in the city a concern, a registration apparatus would establish a minimum standard while fees could help pay for any needed demolitions. Concern was expressed that a fee structure in place, a salve, that with a fee structure in place, a salvageable home could be scrapped, but Ratliff countered that without a rental registration or vacant building ordinance, no incentive exists to secede property, the matter was continued. And next, should be item four, Myers recessed Health and Safety at 7:05 p.m.
Okay, questions or comments regarding the report in Health and Safety Committee? None?
Yes, I have one, I guess it's for Todd. Todd, could you, I missed that meeting, so I didn't get the, the sample legislation. Is it that overdue sometime?
Yeah, I can do that, I'll do that after the meeting.
Okay. And probably, just one comment is that meeting that was supposed to take place on, at 5:30 on July the 2nd at the County Sheriff's Office with the ambulance district did not occur.
It was canceled, it has been rescheduled for a week from tonight, which I don't know what the date is off the top of my head, but it's a, it's a week from tonight at the Sheriff's Office at 5:30 p.m.
Okay, thank you. Fighting Committee, Mr. McKeever.
Okay, Bussaras Fighting Committee, members present, Trucca, Kevin Myers, and myself. Number one, street alley vacations at Harmon Park. Bussaras area walk, youth soccer is interested in facilitating the vacation of alleys between Clinton and Water Streets to enhance Harmon Park. This is in the vicinity of the old water plant, which is scheduled to be demolished. In a letter to council with the city, Traffic Commission expressed no objection to the proposed vacations. Law Director Rob Ratliff explained that more information needs to be gathered from utility companies before the detailed proposal can be drawn up. The matter was continued. Number two, new zoning district. Presently newly annexed areas of the city are zoned into residential estate RE district. Under codified ordinance 1157.03, within three months of annexation, the planning commission develops a zoning plan for the area. In the proposal referred to the fighting committee, newly annexed areas would be unzoned until the planning commission develops a plan. Councilperson Doug Foote explained that he would allow newly annexed properties to continue as is upon annexation. The matter was continued. McKeever recessed the fighting committee at 7:40 p.m.
Questions or comments regarding the minutes of this meeting? Done.
All right, number four, public participation, none. And number five, McKeever asked for a motion to adjourn the joint regular committees, motion by Foote, and second by Myers, to adjourn at 7:17, and motion passed.
Okay, the service committee met in special session on Monday, June 25th, at 5:00 p.m. Service Committee Chairman, Mr. Trucca.
Members present were Dan Wireball, Doug Foote, Andrew Shock, and myself. The special service committee meeting was called by Mayor Jeff Reiser to discuss bulk water hauling and water installation and tap-in fees. The meeting was called to order by Trucca at 5:00 p.m. Bulk water hauling, bulk wa, bulk water haulers, Brian Vaughn, 44 Nevada Winford Road, and Paul Barker, 5266 Conley Road, said it takes too long to fill their trucks with water at the bulk water station at the new water plant, and that because of the delays, they've been forced to go elsewhere to get their water. They also complained about the lack of adequate parking at the station. Garage team leader John Merzberger noted that the pipe at the new plant is smaller than that at the old water plant, and that the solutions are being pursued. Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner added that the city is looking at removing the back flow and considering putting a booster pump. He added that the problem will be fixed in about a week, and that the parking issues will, at the bulk water station, will be addressed. Water installation and tap-in fees. Wagner wanted to revisit proposals for water line installation and tap-in fees outside city limits since the subject was last discussed in committee on May 9. Discussion commenced on whether new customers on the opposite side of the road from the water line should have to pay more because of boring expenses, with the majority of the committee deciding that the costs should be shared equally. Leslie Johnson of 3540 Crestline Road and Vaughn agreed. Shock made a motion to request draft legislation amending codified ordinance 913.02 to include three tiers of water line installation and tap-in fees for new customers outside the city limits, with the figures breaking down as follows. Number one, a one-time fee of $2,500. Number two, a $500 down payment with 12 monthly payments of $179 for a total of $2,647. Number three, $500 down payment and 24 monthly payments of $96 for a total of $2,804. Wireball, uh, let's see, Wireball seconded the motion with vote voting no. With vote voting no. Motion passed by voice vote. The draft legislation will be brought before the service committee at a future meeting. I adjourned the meeting at 6:29 p.m.
Questions or comments regarding this meeting? None? Okay, moving on, the service committee met in special session on Wednesday, June 27th, 2018, at 5:00, 5:00 p.m. Mr. Trucca.
Those members who were present were Dan Wireball, Doug Foote, Andrew Shock, and myself. The special service committee meeting was called by Mayor Jeff Reiser to discuss the water line expansion. The meeting was called to order by Trucca at 5:02 p.m. Water line expansion. Shawn Taple of Northern Ohio Rule Water detailed his organization's plans to extend water lines northeast of Bussaras, focused primarily on Liberty Township. He detailed prospective service areas on a map. According to Taple, bids for installation of lines in Liberty Township came in well above the engineer's estimate. The company will seek new bids in the fall. He said Ohio Northern Rule Water would like to buy water from Bussaras for $2.75 per 1,000 gallons. Vicky Duchan of 1108, Oak Crest Drive, asked if the meeting discussion went beyond the agenda's description of water line expansion. And Law Director Rob Ratliff stated that it was his opinion that it did not. Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner added that the city's plans to extend a water line to residents just outside the city limits, state routes 19 and 100, and County Road 35 are currently in the engineering phase, and there is not yet a timeframe for that project's completion. Trucca adjourned the meeting at 5:30 p.m.
Are there any questions or comments regarding the minutes of this meeting?
I have one question.
Mr. Wireball?
Hopefully the mayor can answer this. What are we selling water to the county for at this point? What do you remember? I couldn't remember that figure.
It's, they buy it at the lowest bulk rate, and I, I, I'm not 100% sure, but it's substantially more than this.
Yeah, I think it was.
I can, we can ask for a Thursday night.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on. Traffic Commission, we have no traffic commission minutes or report. Does anyone have any traffic questions for the mayor? Traffic's flowing smoothly, especially up and around. People seem to be getting around well up at Plymouth, uh, Plymouth Street and everything.
Yeah, we've put a couple barricades up, and that's helped quite a bit lately, and Irving Street is, you know, is becoming new artery, and it's, it's, most of it is actually going over the bypass. ODOT has done a good job with the signs out around 30, so it hasn't been a really issue. It really hasn't. And everybody's been patient, you know, they're well underway.
I note that we do have a lot of the striping and things on all the streets, Southern Avenue is, is done, and, I believe it all looks very nice.
Moving along, our next project in, after Plymouth, will be North Sandusky next year. We're gonna look at that this year, yeah, and maybe do some overlays in North Sandusky, some of the rougher areas to get us through another year on that, so.
Okay, I had, I had someone ask me a question about that today, North Sandusky, but right out in front of their home, right there at Bland Avenue, that it's pretty rough, and it probably could use a little attention.
Yes, we're, we're on that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McKeever.
Mary Road, when is the state going to?
I think it's, I think that is also next year.
Mm-hmm.
About 2018, no, no, 2018, yeah.
Okay, I just, getting pretty rough.
Yeah, there's, it is, it's, once you get a bad winter or two in there, it's, it's surprising how quickly it goes.
Anyone else? None? Okay, I need a motion to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. Shock, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Moving on to report of city officers. Starting with the mayor, Mayor Reiser.
You know, I, I, Madam Chairman, and the first time in four years, I do not have, in, in interest of the holiday, the fireworks, I would reduce my glombiating to wishing everybody a Happy Independence Day, thank God that we live in this country, and for all the sacrifices that our forefathers and mothers have made, now we're blessed. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the mayor this evening?
Well, I mean, I don't know, it's gonna either be Service Director him, or your, your uncle.
Yeah, Mr. Wireball?
So, just, I had a couple questions. On what Stone Street, we're gonna put this door somewhere in, remember?
Where, where on the, where's the, we're, we're.
Going like into the golf course you were gonna stay in?
Oh, yes, 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 yeah.
Like that, still?
Yeah.
I'll say, I thought with them doing all that work down there, I'm not gonna.
Yeah, I'll get an update on you for Friday, or Thursday, the committee meetings, would you?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I just, I go by there and realize that, okay, they work on this street, work on that street, but this is going right, right there.
We got a lot of projects going on.
Oh, I know, I know.
Not enough people, but a lot of pro, not enough people or money and a lot of projects.
Yeah, and then we all know that, and maybe I missed this the last meeting too, the bridge that got wrecked into, the Friendship Bridge?
Yes.
Was that discussed the last?
No, that happened after.
Oh, okay, I don't care, remember?
We're on it, it's okay.
No, but, uh, is, are there, is, do you know if their insurance is gonna cover that?
The sheriff's.
They're gonna help us out on getting this inspection and all?
Well, certainly our position would be that their insurance should cover it, but that's already a matter of litigation. Currently, I haven't talked to, I didn't talk to Jeff today, but currently, we're looking last night new for a structural engineer to do an inspection to determine, you know, how much work needs to be done, if, if any.
Yeah, we have someone light up to str, uh, yeah, we have somebody light up to inspect it. So that'll be done first.
Out of curiosity, how did he get that? How did the person, I can't say who, because I have no idea. How did the person get the car past those barriers?
Very adept driving, future NASCAR.
I was kind of amazed that that car made it that far.
Unfortunately, it was, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, I've got one more.
Okay, Mr. Wireball?
I'm forgetting to ask this one, the street sweeper, are we, are we still mandated?
Good question, yeah, we've had this discussion, it's, we, we do, unfortunately, we're shorthanded and, uh, that person does the sweeping, is, we, Jeff and I had a discussion to get someone else trained to do that, we're just shorthanded and, and have been assigned other jobs, and then we get into vacations and everything, but I agree, I, there is an issue with some of our streets that need to be swept, and, uh, we, Jeff and I had this discussion, uh, this week, about it, yeah.
Block, uh, several weeks ago, and he had a heartburn with my shovel.
Yes.
Staring off.
I know.
I can only do what-
Yes, so we're, we're addressing the sweeping issue.
Okay, any other?
I think I've quit now. No, good question, very good question.
Moving on to the service safety director's report.
Um, I'll need the service, how are they scheduled for, uh, for Independence Day? We're gonna be closed tomorrow, uh, in observation. Uh, garage, excuse me, garbage pickup for tomorrow will be on Thursday. Please have your garbage out by 7:00 AM, because they're always starting early. Um, elite excavating will continue to work on Plymouth Street during the 4th of July, they're not taking time off. Referral, um, for an easement for AEP to complete the removal of service for the soccer fields in the area of the old water treatment plant through public lands and buildings and finance. Uh, another referral for, um, a contract for ORDC, the Ohio Regional Development Company, on the grant management for, for the Shines Art Park stage. We need to refer that to lands and, is it, lands and buildings and finance also? Okay.
Is it economic development?
Uh, for the park, yeah.
Oh, okay. For public lands and-
Public lands, okay. And then finally, a thank you to Sarah, speech by Sarah, Sarah Bessinger and her mother, Dana Walken, for planting the beautiful flowers, uh, for us out in, uh, on the front plant, we may have noticed some McKeever, so, did that out of there, I wouldn't, good thing, appreciate it. And that's Jeff's report.
I think also, a big thank you to, we've had a big variety of people that have been downtown watering, all the hanging baskets, some do it early in the morning, some do it later in the afternoon, and, yeah.
The sun, I mean, if you don't get, I mean, when it's, when it's 90 degrees, you've got very little time. It bakes them, especially with their, and then, uh, trees from planted here, we've done, John Rosdesh especially, has done, uh, been yeoman's work on that, trying to keep those going too, so, once we get through the heat, get into fall season, and just breathe the sighs of relief.
Okay, I have two referrals, uh, both are going to public lands and buildings. One is for, uh, reeasements for AEP to complete the removal of service for down around the soccer fields at the old water treatment plant. Go to, uh, public lands and buildings and finance, and also the, uh, ORDC grant management group for the Shines Art, or, for public, uh, lands and buildings, and I would assume also finance.
So move second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Any other comments regarding this report? None? Moving on, law director.
Thank you, Mayor President. No written report, uh, the Frog's Trailer Park, the E construction has begun, so, like getting a nose job, though, it's gonna get uglier before it gets better. But it's always wet. Uh, Friday, first Friday downtown, and also, uh, movie night, the Friday, first Friday downtown theme is Christmas in July, so the movie Friday night is kinda fun, a little holiday-ish. I'll see, you'll enjoy it. Uh, Doug got moved, it was furniture's our sponsor, stop by, say hello to Doug, he really likes that.
Okay, any questions for the law director this evening? Okay, moving on. The auditor has a lot to say tonight.
Yeah, it's all about me tonight.
Yes.
And I have, uh, the usual monthly reports, your statement of cash position, uh, income tax comparisons, and your revenue tallies to budget. So feel free to enjoy the episodes. Then I have lots of referrals tonight. Uh, number one, from unappropriated funds in the general fund, program one, security of persons and property, police department, materials and supplies, the sum of $1,967.23 for Safety Town donations already received. We got our check for donations that went to the community foundation, which they passed on to us, and some others, they came directly to us, so I've just been kinda saving them up, so that we can get them in that line and they don't get lost in the shuffle. So we need that. Also, from unappropriated funds in the income tax department, personal services, the sum of $13,100 to replenish the lines due to the resignation of an income tax clerk. She had worked for us for over 10 years, so she had a buyout when she left. Uh, from unappropriated funds in the park and recreation land fund, parks and playgrounds, contractual services, the sum of $400 to, uh, cover the cost of an additional cellphone that will cover the rest of the year. From unappropriated funds in, uh, the new water filtration plant, distribution lines, waterworks filtration, capital outlay, the sum of $17,300, um, for the demolition contracts of the old water plant. Then from unappropriated funds in waterworks, water distribution, contractual services, the sum of, uh, $16,300, and also, uh, $1,700 to materials and supplies to replenish the lines for costs incurred for the extension of the water line west on County Road 330. Um, these are costs that will be reimbursed to us, um, very shortly, as I understand it. Uh, then we need to create the category of 7522 waterworks filtration and object 23 contractual services within Fund 705, waterworks replacement. Uh, this is so that we can appropriate funds, uh, for the loan that we're not getting, that we're paying for the difference in cost between our OWDA loan and the cost of demolition. So we need to, uh, create that line so that we can then appropriate for unappropriated funds in waterworks replacement, waterworks filtration, contractual services, the sum of $350,000 for the remaining monies needed for demolition of the old water plant and cleaning of lime lagoons, and the sum of $50,000 in category, uh, 7525 waterworks distribution, contractual services for cleaning of the raw water line. Then, item number eight, from unappropriated funds in sewage disposal debt retirement, uh, the item is also debt retirement, the sum of $7,000. This is for, uh, payment of the interest-free loan for planning of sewer separation per our EPA administrative order. We have the, uh, amortization scheduled, and this is the, uh, scheduled payment. Then we also will need to transfer within, uh, Fund 416, the new water filtration plant, uh, as follows. From water distribution, capital outlay, the sum of $146,263.39 to water filtration, capital outlay, for that same amount, to bring the appropriations in line with the contracts for demolition and cleaning of, uh, lime lagoons and the raw water line. And I believe that's it for tonight.
You should.
I think.
Questions? Does anyone have any questions about all of these appropriations?
I had fun working all this up, too.
So this is gonna need to create quite a few pieces of legislation for-
It will create three, because we need, uh, a separate piece for creation of the, yeah.
Number item six.
Yes, on item six, and then, uh, it's a separate piece for the transfer.
And then the appropriations and celebrations. Okay. Questions, comments? Okay, I need a motion, uh, put this in finance committee.
So move second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, the auditor's statement of cash position due June the 30th is here for you to review. You also received last time the treasures report from May of 2018. I need a motion to accept and file that report.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We have, uh, nothing from the police chief, nothing from the fire chief.
I made a motion to accept the city officer's report.
I have, do I have a second?
Captain.
You seconded it?
I did.
Okay. So that was Mr. McKeever and Mr. Myers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Uh, we have visitors input regarding reports of standing or special committees and of city officers. Does anyone wish to address council this evening? No one? We have no proposed legislation tonight, concerning any unfinished business anyone would like to bring up. We hit it all, under new miscellaneous business. Um, reminded that city offices are closed on Wednesday. That's what I was supposed to ask tonight, um, are they out at the wastewater treatment plant? Is that going to be open tomorrow in order to take waste and scar- yard waste and stuff out there tomorrow or not?
Well, I might be able to give an answer for you if you stall a little bit here, so-
If I stall a little bit, okay. Okay.
I, I, I don't, I couldn't answer that, man, I don't know.
Okay. Tuesday, July the 3rd, Independence Day fireworks tonight out at the fairgrounds, and who's in charge of fireworks tonight? Doug. So it's like he's not here with us this evening, and is it Kwanis?
Yes.
That's, that's doing this, how many years have they, I'm stretching this here, how many years have they sponsored it? It's been quite a few.
It has been quite a few. Bruce, when the J.C.'s quit doing, that's when we took over.
Probably about eight years ago. And your baby-
Well, yeah, it's probably, it's 10 or so, yeah, at least, it's 10.
And he promised that tonight, he said it's gonna be a longer fireworks than normal, so it should be enjoyable. Make sure you, uh, go out there this evening, sit down, take a, uh, soda with you, and sit down and watch the fireworks. Friday, July the 6th, this first Friday, it's Christmas in July downtown, and don't forget the movie, and, uh, kind of starting about, what, 9:30?
It's not 9:30, it's starting-
It, it is such a neat place to sit and watch a movie, so if you haven't done it yet, take your chair, go down, go down there and just sit and enjoy it, it's, it's just delightful. Saturday, July the 7th, is last night, the first of three of them that are going to take place downtown, from 7:30 to 9:30 PM. If you recall, there were, uh, there was a group that came in that, uh, were of an era that enjoyed taking laps in the downtown era, or downtown area, and, uh, they are going to be back, and they wanted to do it three times this year instead of just once, so the first night is Saturday, July the 7th. July the 15th to 21st is 161st Annual Crawford County Fair out at the fairgrounds. Uh, Mr. Wireball, I hear, uh, you've been raising animals for the fair?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and so, uh, I assume it's, uh, through a group that your kids are-
Four each, yeah.
Four each, okay. So, a lot of participation by the kids out there at the, at the fair, and a lot of things to go see, so make sure you get a look at that one. Anything else for new or miscellaneous business? Okay, I need to excuse Mr. Vogt this evening?
No, we might just do that.
We might just do that, okay. Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by-
Second.
Ms. Sack, to excuse Mr. Vogt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We hope he remains safe during this whole thing, though I've, I've been told he's not going to be allowed to be actually setting off any of these fireworks. Uh, the joint regular committee meetings for this Thursday evening at 6:00 PM. All referrals from this council meeting and any open project list items may be discussed during the committee meetings. Referrals from this evening are-
We have six new referrals. We have the appropriations, we have the transfer, and we have the, uh, category creation. Uh, those are all from the auditor, they'll all go to finance. We have the easements on Lane Street for AEP, uh, from the service safety director, those go to public lands, that goes to public lands and finance. Uh, we have the ORDC grant for the art park stage, uh, from the service safety director, that also goes to public lands and buildings and finance. We have the liquor license transfer, that goes to health and safety, that was from council. We have three existing, uh, items in committee, uh, on the agenda for Thursday. The traffic map changes in health and safety, the rental property requirements in health and safety, and the water installation and tap-in fees, draft ordinance, and service, and the meeting notes will go off as soon as the committee's open.
Okay. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
So move second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers, to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We are adjourned at 7:45. 7:45.